We are recording, we are going. So again, hello, everybody. Welcome to this evening's study session. As always, I am Josh, one of the moderators on the Heimler's History Discord. With me is Styles, one of your course consultants. He'll be helping me out tonight during the session, answering your questions regarding A push and AP Gov. And we're going to try to keep it to content-specific stuff to begin with. And as we get along in the evening towards the end, we'll be going over test-specific stuff. So how to approach specific questions, how to answer certain things, stuff like that. So we are going to go ahead. If you have any questions regarding A push content or AP Gov content, go ahead, drop those in the chat box that you see in the upper right-hand corner. And we will get going already. Uh, one question here, what portion of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 was overturned by Shaw versus Reno? Styles, if you want to take that?
Yeah, so uh, Shaw v Reno is one of the required six-year uh, the uh, sorry, the required Supreme Court cases that you have to know. Uh, so there's no exception. Uh, the date that this case was decided, it was in 1993. Um, the reason it was important because it um, it underlined the title of standard of strict scrutiny uh, when it came to racial districting. As you know, racial gerrymandering is gerrymandering that is illegal. That is where they redlined districts essentially, and it was in uh, you know, it was towards the African-American community. Um, you know, the, there, there's one district in Chicago, for example, uh, where one of the districts was like, you know, it was weirdly shaped, but they were trying to redline around a certain district so that way, you know, the poorer neighborhoods um, were not in, uh, you know, the richer ones in that sense. Um, but all you have to know pretty much is that Shaw v Reno, uh, Shaw um, represented like the white voters, whereas, you know, I believe it was Reno that was like, um, that was, that was opposing it, obviously. Um, so pretty much in 1993, it was just redistricting. Um, in, in terms of racial gerrymandering violated the Fourteenth Amendment of the Equal Protection Clause.
Alrighty, next question we have here is what is the difference between the First and the Second New Deal? So these are both you, so both the First and Second New Deal were aspects during FDR's term in office of basically different public works programs to help revitalize the country during the Great Depression. Uh, the biggest difference is that the First New Deal, excuse me, was um, designed to help restore the basic economic functions of the country. Um, so you know, more uh, working programs, uh, getting people, you know, getting, getting money into programs that people were making money and money was uh, going in and out of the economy to try to stimulate growth that way. While as the Second New Deal was programs that were trying to improve people's lives. So things such as um, social security, things such as uh, improving uh, working conditions, uh, supporting labor unions, things like that. So kind of the biggest way to think about it is the First New Deal was just getting people back to work, getting things rolling so that there would be money for people to spend and for things to do. While as the Second New Deal made it so that people could have uh, a living job, a living wage, as it were, so that they can, you know, make money and after they work, they can be safe both while working and afterwards in retirement with uh, social security. Uh, next question here, significance of the Whig Party? Styles, if you want to take that way?
Yeah, so the Whig Party, uh, so in opposition to the rise of the modern Democratic Party, as you know that Andrew Jackson founded that party, uh, when he became president in 1829. The following year, he signed an act known as the Indian Removal Act, which, you know, led to the Trail of Tears and, you know, other atrocities that happened in uh, you know, with relocating natives, um, pretty much like degrading them over a period of time, making them settle outside of areas of colonization in order for manifest destiny to take progress. Um, the main reason the Whig Party was founded by Henry Clay uh, was to oppose the idea that Andrew Jackson had more legitimate power than the government itself. Cause uh, the reason for this is that people were actually thinking that they dubbed Andrew basically in a mockery um, known as uh, King Andrew, which was basically saying that, you know, him being able to enact like martial law at a whim or, you know, certain other policies allowed him to have more power than like, you know, certain other aspects of government such as Congress. Uh, that being said, uh, Whigs did have a more conservative tendency than the modern Democrat, obviously. So they were in place until, you know, Abraham Lincoln took office um, as the first Republican. They slowly faded out though, um, because, you know, lack of popularity and whatnot. Uh, but I will admit, um, you know, there were uh, times where the Whig Party uh, actually had like various like, you know, opposition ideas um, that actually made sense in terms of how um, government should be carried out, whereas, you know, Andrew Jackson, uh, sometimes he was overstepping his boundaries, like in the case of the Indian Removal. Other times, it may be in the sense that, you know, enacting martial law on South Carolina so that way they don't secede. Um, you know, was something good, because, you know, secession, obviously, you know, leading up to the Civil War was a bad idea. Uh, it still is. Um, but in that sense, you know, the, the two parties have been like, they were in opposition during that time, uh, especially around Andrew Jackson's term. Uh, but that's kind of it.
Alright, next question we have here, similarities and differences between classical and progressive liberalism. So you can, in a way, think of progressive liberalism almost a bit uh, like socialism in the fact that progressive liberalism was more about the collective, about the whole, about, you know, everybody doing their part to support the whole and doing what's best for society. While as classical liberalism still maintains, you know, individual rights, individual freedoms, people kind of standing up for themselves in a way, still having the ability to do what they want. But while still maintaining, you know, liberal ideas of a, um, of a larger government, of government willing to support people um, and things like that. So that's, that's really the main difference. And so I think kind of the easiest way to think about it is progressive is way more, excuse me, way more socialist, way more um, supporting uh, the collective society and ensuring all society benefits while, you know, you individually, what you do. Uh, you shouldn't think of yourself, you should basically think of others all the time. Whereas classical uh, liberalism is kind of just, you know, wanting to have bigger government and having kind of broader support for, for everybody in a way. Um, let's see here, could we use developments outside the US as context for our LEQs? Yes, you can. Um, because that will count as outside knowledge. Um, so you definitely can do that. Um, I don't say you, I wouldn't say you have to do that, but if you just happen to know something that can help you uh, contextualize an event or help you develop an argument that's outside of the curriculum or outside of US history in particular, by all means, go for it. Um, it'll still count. Uh, you could potentially get a um, uh, a um, a complexity point, can't believe I forgot that. You can get a complexity point for that potentially. Uh, but don't feel like you have to do that. That's more of a, if by chance you know it, by all means, go for it. Let's see.
Alright, what court cases do I need to know?
Depends which class.
So uh, let's go with uh, American history first off. So I'd probably say the most important, the two most important cases I need to know are Brown v Board of Education. Um, and probably the other one would be like, maybe Marbury v Madison. Uh, those are two of the ones that I remember uh, having to learn during American history. Other than that, I mean, like, uh, there have been others, you know, McCullough v Maryland, Givens v Ogden. Um, but, you know, throughout the, the course of American history, you know, you kind of learn certain court cases are important. Um, uh, in, in the earlier sector of American history. Whereas, you know, the only one that you learn in contemporary American history is Brown v Board, which is close to the Civil Rights Era, during the Civil Rights Era. As for AP Gov, it is essential to know the following court cases that I'm about to mention. Um, if you have not reviewed them, there are some in the Heimler channel, actually all of them are. Um, so the required cases that you have to know are Marbury v Madison, McCullough v Maryland, Shank v United States, Brown v Board of Education, Engel v Vitale, Baker v Carr, Gideon versus Wainwright, Tinker versus Des Moines Independent Community School District, New York Times versus United States, Wisconsin v Yoder, Shaw v Reno, US v Lopez, McDonald v Chicago, and Citizens United versus the Federal Election Commission. As you know, um, if you were looking for Roe v Wade, there has actually been an update on the status of that Supreme Court case. I'm going to read the following, uh, just in case if anybody had any questions over, you know, it being during the exam. The College Board has said, "We've received questions from AP teachers about the status of Roe v Wade 1973." One of the 15 required Supreme Court cases. "The Supreme Court recently overturned Roe in the case of Dobbs v Jackson's Women's Health Organization in 2022." According, Roe does not, uh, no longer applies as precedent for Topic 3.9, Amendments, Due Process, and the Right to Privacy. Furthermore, the full set of legal implications related to the Dobbs decision and the status of Roe remain uncertain and are likely to evolve. Because of AP exam questions are drafted years before they are administered, future questions about the role of this case are precedent to take a risk of becoming inaccurate and confusing to students. Consequently, teachers and students should not expect exam questions related to Roe v Wade on the 2023 AP exam. The AP program is evaluating the inclusion of Roe on future AP exams and will post an update this fall." So yeah, if anybody's um, having questions about that particular case, that case will not, don't expect questions on Roe v Wade um, or, or any of its aspects uh, this year. Uh, so the other 14, uh, definitely expect those. So yeah, that, if that answers your question, yeah.
Yep, there you go. And uh, joining us up on the stage is another one of our course consultants, uh, Three. Hello. Welcome to the, uh, welcome to the session.
Hey, uh, yeah, I do A push.
Awesome. Um, Three, by chance, uh, do you want to explain the cause and effects of the quasi-war that the US had with France?
Oh yeah, so um, that's basically just imprisonment of uh, Frenchmen and like sailors and all sorts of people who are, because there's the uh, what is it, the French Revolution going on right now between French and Britain. So when USA is, you know, trading with Britain, uh, Fr- France is obviously getting pretty upset with that. So they started impressing soldiers and uh, you know, like taking down ships, basically that's what imprisonment means, or like just taking them, because the high seas was like, kind of, they were ruled by like pirates and there's no, there's no rules there, right? So the people literally hung the flags of fake countries, like Frenchmen will, will literally have American flags to like bait people in and then just kill them and stuff like that. Um, so there's a lot of things that happened. Because it's called a quasi-war, because quasi means like not really, that's why you, so it wasn't an actual war. We never declared war on, on France itself, but it, it was something that happened under the Adams administration, I'm pretty sure. And uh, the main thing that came out of that was the XYZ affair, if I recall correctly. Right, Josh? I think, well.
Ooh, I forget, ah, see, it's been a while. A push was the first AP I did, so this is taking a long way back.
Uh, yeah, it is. Okay, so that XYZ affair was basically, it was called XYZ because the people, uh, basically America sent a bunch of negotiators to France to like, hey, let's stop killing our sailors. And then they were called in the newspaper by X, Y, and Z. So it was called the XYZ Affair. And it was basically just to stop the imprisonment. But the thing is, the foreign French minister was like, hey, I'm not going to talk to you guys unless you give me like a billion dollars. So we never actually talked to France. And then like Americans got really upset over that and then didn't like the French. And that's why it's called, that's why it's like a, an event, is because we got pissed off from France.
Alrighty, here we have differences uh, between courts finding and precedent for uh, court cases. So precedent is basically just saying, you know, because of one historical decision, um, a similar decision is upheld because of that precedent. Precedent, sorry. Um, one of the key examples of this is going to be McCullough versus Maryland, which kind of, sorry, Marbury versus Madison, Marbury versus Madison. Uh, that, which upheld the legitimacy of the courts and basically set the precedent that uh, the judicial system has the right to judiciate laws and basically determine whether law can stand and whether it can uh, continue being a law or not. Uh, whereas courts finding is just, you know, how the court finds a um, particular law, how they, how they make a, a decision, I guess. You could also say court decision for that. Um, ah, Styles, I have your, uh, your, your favorite case here, Simplify Citizens United versus FEC.
Nice. Yeah, I think this is like either the second or the third time that this has been asked. Uh, this is a very popular case. It's also the last case that you tend to learn uh, in AP Gov. Um, I'll pretty much just break it down right here. Citizens United uh, versus the Federal Election Commission dealt with certain things regarding interest groups. However, it had to do with the fact that um, a certain organization called the Bipartisan Campaign Reform Act, known as BICRA. Um, they were pretty much trying to uh, prevent the application of BICRA uh, to its film. Um, uh, it was a movie called Hillary the Movie. Um, and if you're familiar with it, it talks about, you know, whether Hillary Clinton at the time in 2008 would have made a decent president. Um, in an attempt to um, to, to gain like, you know, monetary value from this movie, you know, um, there were things called electioneering camp, uh, communications and campaigns that, you know, tried to um, assimilate with a certain candidate. Um, this court case pretty much just made it all the way up to the Supreme Court. Uh, it asked questions uh, regarding uh, the Supreme Court's decision um, uh, regarding a previous case called McConnell, uh, to resolve um, all constitutional as applied challenges to BICRA when it upheld disclosure agreements. Uh, and it requirements as a statute saying it's constitutional. Uh, but the main thing um, that it's saying um, is that uh, are certain political speeches and certain campaign speeches up for regulation? In the sense that um, can an interest group be directly affiliated with a candidate? Or what is the extent to which an interest group can have involvement in a campaign? And the answer is, is that interest groups are not allowed to have direct involvement with a candidate. However, they are allowed to donate money in support of that candidate. Um, but, you know, up to a certain amount. Um, you can do it either anonymously, sometimes you're allowed to do it by name. Uh, it allows citizens to invest in some of these interest groups and, you know, be on the effort of that. Um, the only thing uh, that uh, they, they pretty much limited after that case was the kind of advertising that you can do regarding those candis, uh, candidacies. Uh, so for example, if an ad were to come up, uh, like during the Super Bowl halftime show or something like that, like, you know, right after or whatever, and you're like, you know, you're sitting down to watch it. Um, the, the key things that you, you have to look for is what kind of language are um, the people in the ad using? If they're saying vote for, or support, or do not vote for, or something like that. They're clearly saying that this is an actual ad campaign that has been approved by the candidate himself even. Uh, and, you know, they'll say, I like, I approve this message or something like that. Um, or a bit by like the, the candidate's foundation. Um, if it is not, if it is just like a bunch of statistics and facts that kind of basically talk about like, you know, opposing uh, another candidate or something like that. Or like, you know, in support of a certain candidate, but they're not clearly saying like, oh, you should vote for them. They're saying like, oh, don't vote for the other guy or something like that. Um, if they're not clearly using that kind of voter terminology, then chances are most likely, I guarantee you that is an interest group. Uh, so pretty much in a nutshell, Citizens United v FEC declared, what is the extent to which interest groups can have involvement in elections?
Thank you, Styles. In case you had any doubts that he was a political science major, ladies and gentlemen. Um, next question here, oh, hey, Harry, welcome to the, uh, welcome to the club here.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, welcome. Um, see, next question we have, what is the difference between judicial restraint and original constitutionalism? For the most part, they're actually kind of similar. Um, with uh, basically both of them saying that the Constitution uh, limits the powers of different branches of governments, limits the power of the um, of judiciary and that judges must follow what the Constitution says. They're not trying to bend around it, go, you know, oh, well, it doesn't explicitly say this, so therefore it's allowed. They take the approach of uh, if it's clearly mentioned, then we can do it. If it's not mentioned, then we have no right to be involved in it. That's not a judicial matter. That's not something that the uh, court has a power to do. They basically take the approach that the courts are only able to do what is explicitly stated within the Constitution and that laws are only able to do what's explicitly stated in the Constitution. So they're, for the most part, basically the same thing. Um, let's see here. Um, New Deal organizations that you need to know, Harry, uh, if you want to take this one, what are, what are some organizations of the New Deal that students should know? Or programs, rather?
Oh, I'm gonna be honest, I, I don't remember the New Deal stuff.
Three, you got this?
Um, yeah, there's, um, the thing is, you don't even know most of the specific New Deal programs. You just need to know that New Deal was split into three different categories, right? It's uh, what is it? Uh, reform, recovery, yeah, relief, recovery, and reform, right? So what relief is, is that it's basically, let's try to fix the stuff going on right now ASAP, right? The people who are starving on the streets, the people who lost all their money, let's try to fix all that. That's what relief is. Re- uh, recovery is um, like the banks, the banks and the housing market and all the stuff that is more long-term, but not super long-term. And then reform is basically, let's make sure that this Great Depression doesn't happen again. And like, let, let's try to perform what's going on, right? And there are multiple different uh, what is it, district programs, new, new programs. There are different programs in each of these, and you should know at least like two to three um, programs. I would say just two, like, I don't even know that many, because they will never ask you like, hey, list three from the reform category. They're, they're gonna ask you historical thinking questions and then being able to specifically cite things is really good, because it like makes you look really smart, right? So you want to know at least a few from there. Uh, I know from uh, what is it, things like the TVA, the Tennessee Valley Authority, and like the AA, which was the agricultural something, that that was for uh, like relief, to try to help out farmers and stuff. But like Social Security Administration and like the FDIC with the banking and stuff, that's uh, recovery, right? And then um, I can't remember anything for reform. Uh, I know WPA is for relief. But you just need to know like at least a few different, you're A push teacher though, might probably make you remember as like 20, because that's what mine did and I hated him for that. Social Security, yeah, Social Security was established in the New Deal because basically a lot of old people were disenfranchised after like all their, imagine you're like eight years old and then you have a hundred thousand dollars in savings and then inflation booms up and your hundred thousand dollars is now worth nothing, right? Social Security is meant to protect that, so that's why uh, that was inserted. Would you prefer to say that FDR's main focus was mainly relief? He was focusing on everything. He was really ambitious, like he literally put in his uh, opening speech, says like, hey, I'm gonna do this thing called the uh, the Hundred Day, Hundred Day Program, something like that. He was like, I'll fix all your problems in a hundred days, trust me, man. And like, uh, it, whether it would have worked out or not is debatable, but he was focusing on a lot of things. It's, I would say he's more focusing on like the common man, if anything, the, the relief programs, because he had a lot of things that he wanted to do that were getting stripped down from the Supreme Court. And then that's why there's a, uh, that's why he tried to increase the amount of seats in the Supreme Court so he can manipulate it. Then he got a backlash, he got a lot of backlash for that. So yeah.
That is also where the origin of judging how a president does in their first hundred days in office came from. Uh, was because of FDR doing all those things. Um, yes, so I do realize that there are a bunch of questions. I really appreciate all these questions coming in, guys. Uh, unfortunately, there are only four of us and way more of you. So uh, I will apologize in advance, we don't get to one of your questions. But do appreciate it, and seeing some, some people uh, in the chat who are going through and answering some of those questions we aren't able to get to. So uh, definitely appreciate that. Um, but yeah, we will do our best to try to get through as many of these questions as possible. Also making sure that you guys get enough uh, context and detail to your answers. Uh, next question here, uh, what is the difference uh, between the New Deal and the Great Society? Um, Harry, you want to take that one?
Wait, hold on.
New, New Deal versus uh, Great Society?
Um, well, okay, so for one, I'm pretty sure the New Deal was off of the Great Depression, right? And the New Deal is, um, like, what was A push guy talking about was, you know, a bunch of reforms. I would say the Great Society was very sim, the Great Society was pretty similar to the New Deal. Uh, I can't tell the difference, but I think the New Society's built off what the New Deal's had. I'm not sure specifically if Styles or Three wants to talk about the big differences.
I was gonna go, I'm ready.
Yeah, so the main differences, um, I would probably say may, basically the uh, the presidency. Um, so the New Deal happened during FDR, uh, whereas the Great Society happened during Lyndon B. Johnson. The FDR uh, administration during the um, the New Deal, uh, they were trying to get people new jobs. So, you know, the railroads, um, the mines, building uh, dams and that kind of stuff. Uh, basically all the organizations that Three mentioned earlier, you know, the TVA, the FDIC and that kind of stuff. You know, whether it was reform, recovery, or um, uh, what was the third one?
Reform.
Reform, uh, no, reform, recovery and something else.
Uh, wait, no, it, it's relief, recovery, reform.
Relief, recovery, reform, right. Um, so that's kind of it in a nutshell. So he was trying to create uh, jobs, in other words. Okay, now we fast forward to Lyndon B. Johnson's presidency. Alright, it's post-World War II. We're trying to create more economic um, variability, in other words. Like, so in other words, he, he pretty much, he is the president that uh, founded like certain government programs to help uh, aid, you know, like the sick, the elderly, uh, the, the disabled. Uh, so he founded like, you know, Medicare and Medicaid. Um, for um, you know, people that can't afford, you know, certain kinds of healthcare. Um, uh, and in other words, like he was able to improve like certain sectors in the economy that went unnoticed during uh, FDR's presidency. Because during his presidency, it was a time of war, we weren't really focused on healthcare, we were focused on, you know, preserving the Union and preserving um, the country's, you know, job sectors and whatnot. So that, that's the main difference.
Oh, and I just want to add on, because I'm sorry, I remember some of this stuff. The Great Society was more like a war on poverty and something you want to know, know is that it was his war, it bring poverty rates significantly low until near the Vietnam War where Lyndon B. Johnson started allocating most of the money towards the Vietnam War. So that's where, when the New Society started to break apart. So you want to know that the New Society was a success for a short period of time, because it did bring poverty down. But as soon as the Vietnam War happened, it started to fall apart, then you guys know where it goes from there.
Alrighty, there you go. Uh, next question we have here is what was the Wilmot Proviso? Um, so I actually had to look this up because I wasn't quite sure myself. But basically what the Wilmot Proviso was, was a proposal in 1846 to try in ban slavery from territory that the US acquired during the Mexican-American War. Because, you know, this was kind of uh, the lead-up to the Civil War on, you know, the question of uh, you know, what is um, what, where is slavery's position in the United States? Because, you know, there was, especially in the South, sentiments that um, you know, slavery is a, is a part of, of their culture, it's a part of their economy and therefore should be allowed in any new uh, territory that joins the Union. Whereas the view in the North was, you know, well, you know, hey, slavery is kind of bad. Let's not have that be a part of uh, new colonies. And so the Wilmot Proviso, uh, which is named after Congressman David Wilmot of Pennsylvania, uh, basically uh, tried to pass a um, pass a, a, a rider as part of a bill to basically uh, ban slavery in the new col, in the new um, the new territory that the US engaged during the Mexican-American War. That um, did not pass, but it did set the stage for the compromise of 1850 that um, then uh, basically had it where it was, oh, if I remember correctly, it was um, that, um, yeah, it basically, in some states, it, it banned slavery and was a new territory, it, 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 um, it banned uh, slavery. Uh, and then again, you kind of had the setup for the uh, Civil War after that. But yeah, basically the Wilmot Proviso was one of the uh, early attempts uh, before the Civil War to try to uh, reduce the role of slavery in the United States. Um, yeah, there was a question of if you need to know who the specific authors are for the AP Gov documents. I'm assuming this is in reference to the Federalist Papers?
You just need to know, basically, I would say, you, you need to know James Madison, you need to know Alexander Hamilton, and you need to know probably Thomas Jefferson for the Declaration of Independence. Those are like the main three. Uh, other than that, you don't really need, I mean, be acquainted with obviously like Thomas Hobbes, Jean Jacques Rousseau, John Locke. Um, but, you know, other than that, you know, if it's not an Enlightenment thinker and not a person who wrote a major paper like Federalist or Brutus, uh, definitely like, you know, there's not really a point in memorizing uh, that. Or, I mean, unless you count Dr. King in Birmingham Jail, which is a later document that you'll read. Uh, sometimes that uh, paper is put on the exam, uh, if you're doing like the argument essay. Uh, but, you know, as a whole, like the, like the ones that I just mentioned, those are the ones that you should probably study.
Alrighty, yep, there you go. Uh, how did the role of women shift between 1920 and 1960? Oh, boy. Um, so, I mean, well, for one, they got the right to vote, that's a big deal. Um, yeah, women were given the uh, the right to vote. Um, as part of both World War efforts, uh, women gained a greater prevalence in the workplace, helped shift attitudes away from women uh, being, you know, confined to the home as homemakers to support the family and being able to support themselves, ha- have a wage and uh, work alongside their husbands. Um, greater emphasis on uh, women's rights, on, you know, women not necessarily being tied to a family, but being able to be independent and do as but being able to be independent and do as they will, do as they say. Um, so I think, yeah, I think the greatest shift is all through time, um, women going from being, you know, the um, being the caretakers of the family and kinda having a secondary role to moving uh more towards equality uh with men and having uh more opportunities uh both in the workforce and in life and being able to um in many ways have an equal playing field. Um, and then we're just gonna ignore um the last five-ish years of of history. We're just gonna ignore that, pretend that did not happen for this course. For this course. Um, let's see here. What else do we have? Hmm, ah, difference between the Teller and the Platt Amendments. Do you wanna take that one, Three?
Um, yeah, I I think I know the difference. I I know what both of them are. I just don't know the which one is which. Uh, I'm pretty sure Teller Amendment is the one at the beginning of the Spanish-American War where they basically said, we're gonna try to help you Cuban independence out and we're gonna, after we win the war against the Spanish, we're gonna leave you guys alone. And the Platt Amendment was, haha, psych, we're not gonna do that and we're gonna colonize you guys without really colonizing. Where basically they would take all the exports, the money, and then they don't have any power to do whatever they wanted in Cuba. But they wouldn't actually add them as a state. So they basically did all like the, they basically took all the benefits of colonization without having to actually colonize them, which is like so American. But yeah, it's basically Teller Amendment is, hey, we're buddies. And then Platt Amendment is psych, that's like it.
Yep, there you go. Um, let's see. Uh, is overriding a veto a check on the executive branch? Yes, it is.
Oh, I saw one that that's kept being asked, so I just maybe, if I can answer that one.
Yeah, well, for economics question?
No, it's like, um, what were some of the policies during the Cold War?
Oh, yeah, cuz I I'm probably gonna do the economics question right after, cuz I I've seen that one like three times, so I might just.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I just briefly do the, some of the policies during the Cold War. So I, the way I like to think it is, beginning the Cold War was the containment policies. And near the end is more of like the, what was that word, like detente or? If I don't know how to pronounce it, like D E N T E N T. Um, but more beginning towards like the Cold War, you have like the two main policies that you wanna know is like the Truman Doctrine and then um, which is basically containment policy. That's your biggest policy. Is basically containing communism to make sure that um, that countries don't fall into communism. Because the whole idea is that, oh, um, if one country falls to communism, then um, other countries will fall into communism. Like, for example, Vietnam, the reason why the US got so involved in Vietnam is cuz if Vietnam fell to communism, then you would have Cambodia, Laos, Thailand, Malaysia, all the countries around it would fall to communism. So that's the main like idea that Truman Doctrine is saying, sending any type of financial, military, or any type of aid to any countries that might fall to communism. Another policy is like um, nearly end of the Cold War, which is like detente, which is like de-escalating tensions between the Soviet Union and the United States. And I don't know if Stiles or APUSH remembers any specific policies that de-escalated tensions. I think it's like stopping from like nuclear arms or whatever from, or whatever if APUSH wants to take over.
Uh, the the one that I can think of right now is the the fact that Nixon went to China and visited Mao Zedong there. And then I'm pretty sure, uh, what is it, Khrushchev?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's two um policies.
Yeah, Khrushchev actually came over to America and like that is kinda unheard of. And then we had the uh, the ping pong affair or something. It's really stupid. Basically just a bunch of American, the the American ping pong team went over to compete in China. I don't know why it's a historical event, but it's like, you know, it's like, it happened.
Yeah, it was something like Nixon managed to get like two Chinese native pandas uh out of the deal. Um, uh, I know the names. I just, yeah, the the panda's names were, I believe it was Ling Ling and Sing Sing was the other one. No, those were the names of the pandas.
Why, why do you love that?
Well, I mean, all pandas, regardless of where they're born or whatever, they're always given native Chinese names, no matter where they're born. If they're born in captivity in America or if they're born in mainland China. Uh, the fact is that Nixon somehow caught these pandas out of like some kinda like bargain deal when he was talking um with, uh, I don't know if it was Chairman Mao himself, it probably was. Um, you know, if he was talking with Mao Zedong or, you know, some official from the Chinese Communist Party. Uh, but yeah, he managed to, yeah, I I don't really know much about the deal.
Uh, full disclosure, this is not something that you're required to know for um.
Yeah, sorry for putting on a tangent here. It's kinda interesting, though, I will admit.
The easiest things you have to know just about detente is that note that it was Nixon's thing. It means like release from tension. And the biggest things you need to know is that the SALT Treaty, where basically it's strategic arms, something, limiting treaty, I don't know. Basically it's just less nukes and then there's the anti- anti-ballistic missile treaty, where it's basically just like also less nukes and like less testing stuff. And then it was basically like, instead of blowing up the world a hundred times over, we can only do it ten times over. So it's like, you know, we reduced the amount of nukes there and stuff like that. That was Nixon's policy. And also another big thing in Nixon's policy for detente was that the fact uh that the the Vietcong were being supplied by communist countries and we were supplying these South Vietnam, but instead of, you know, sending more troops there, we started we started this thing called Vietnamization, where basically Nixon was like, yeah, we're not winning this war, but I'm gonna pretend to support it anyways. So we pulled out a lot of the troops from South Vietnam, but we still gave them guns and stuff. Like, that's gonna help. And then South Vietnam like shortly fell after. So that's why Vietnam is still a communist state to this day. But yeah, that's another form of detente.
And just to point out, um, for anyone who's like from world here, I see a lot of world questions or like, oh, is this useful? A lot of world history, US history and Euro history do overlap, so like a lot of things like like Cold War do overlap, so anything you're hearing for the Cold War is useful for any like the AP classes that you're taking.
Yeah, same for other stuff like the Industrial Revolution or Enlightenment ideas, like that stuff affected, like it wasn't just America or it wasn't just Europe. It was like all over the world, like, you know, there were other revolutions, you know? So yeah, like Harry said, like pretty much like it overlaps, you know, on all aspects of time and throughout history.
Yep, all of these uh interrelate in different ways. Um, so yeah, there's no necessarily just the one, um, there there's no like history, there there's no, let me rephrase. A lot of the AP history courses are really interconnected, uh, just with like the stuff they cover. So there's a lot of interconnectivity between uh Europe and world with world and US history, US history, government. Um, even government and world, so, you know, just because, you know, we're covering necessarily one course doesn't necessarily mean that we're not covering things that'll be helpful for other courses. Um, and it's just helpful to know that, uh, especially to help with contextualization and to help with the complexity point, just so, you know, you have the things that they can choose from. So, um, if this is your first AP course, I will say, you know, the more AP courses you do, especially the more AP history courses that you do, the more that you'll see that interconnectivity and the more that you'll be able to like draw on the knowledge that you gained from one AP history course in order to use with another AP history course. That's kind of a a neat little thing there. Um, moving on to the next question, was the supremacy?
I think it was.
Sorry, yes, you had the kids, the Kenzie thing. Go for that.
Yeah, I don't wanna like ignore this one because um, this one is very important, I guess. I mean, if you're taking the AP macro econ, uh, yeah, I guess that's, that's probably the only one. It's not really prevalent in government um or in American history, but it says, can you explain Keynesian economics? Um, so before I explain uh Keynesian economics, I have to explain like the two people that were involved. Uh, were these guys basically, uh, um, I keep forgetting the first names. I only know their last name. So Keynes uh was one of them and Hayek was the other one. Um, so it was John Maynard Keynes and let me see, Friedrich Hayek was the other guy. Uh, so these two had very differing uh perspectives on how the economy should have been handled, you know, rather regarding, you know, debt, inflation, um, you know, job sectors, that kinda stuff. Uh, so in other words, um, Keynesian economics in simple terms is basically, um, the government has an economy um, that, you know, fluctuates from time to time, usually depending on consumption, investment, government expenditures, spending, imports and exports, um, causing like certain change, which may lead to government intervention. Whereas Hayek believed, you know, some, most of the time, uh, the economy can just sort itself out. Um, obviously Keynesian economics has more of a stronger suit, saying that, you know, sometimes government intervention is required. Uh, because, you know, say in the case of high inflation, if the government does not act on it, you know, then, you know, the, you know, the cause for inflation i- is just gonna keep going and going. And um, you know, there's not really much you can do about it unless there is government intervention. So sometimes it sorts itself out, sometimes it doesn't. Uh, you know, sometimes it's complicated where there's like, you know, high unemployment, like in the case of stagflation. Uh, but, you know, in the end, like if you're taking macro econ, definitely, um, definitely be acquainted with this kinda philosophy because it does carry over into the later units. If you're in government, I think it's only mentioned once or something like that. It's not really mentioned at all. You don't really have to worry about it. Um, in US history, I think it might have been mentioned. Um, I never really saw it on the exam, uh, just just for economics. So yeah, if anybody's taking the macro econ exam, definitely like study up on that.
Alrighty, there we go. Uh, next question here, was the supremacy clause established in McCullough versus Maryland? Or was it already set in stone with Article Six? So it was set in stone with Article Six, what McCullough versus Maryland did is it uh, it set the precedent for it. It basically legitimized that, yes, you know, the uh federal government has power over state governments and is able to kinda force the states to do what the federal government wants them to do. Um, because, you know, again, with a lot of these laws, like they need to be tested, they need to be proven. Um, and so this is kinda what set the precedent for the supremacy clause to be in existence. And, you know, as you go on in further cases, um, courts can then turn. And if there's an issue that arises that's similar to McCullough versus Maryland, they can just turn to the case and say, nope, already set with precedent, therefore we take this particular ruling on the issue. So that is that. Um, let's see. We'll do a couple more questions from the chat here, uh, and then we will uh have some folks come up if they want to ask uh questions. Um, so if you have not had a chance to uh have a question answered, we will do our best to get answered. Uh, let's see here.
I'm seeing one on super PACs. Should, you think we should answer that one?
If you wanna answer, go for it.
Alright, cool. Back to interest groups, my guys. So, pretty much, uh, this regarding Citizens United. Super PACs are basically that, so if you don't know what a super PAC is, or be familiar with what a PAC is, in other words, uh, a super PAC is, you know, a larger corporation of what a political action committee is. Uh, these guys basically receive certain unlimited contributions, in other words, from individuals or corporations or even labor unions uh that want to finance um independent movements to get a candidate elected. Um, they can't do it directly because, you know, that's that's illegal. Um, but um, they can do it up to a certain extent. As a citizen, you're allowed to donate only so much to a um, a PAC. Um, but yeah, these super PACs tend to, um, they 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 spend a lot of money trying to get, you know, certain ads into the media, whether it's on newspapers or, you know, obviously for the people in the modern age, computers, movies, um, television shows and even social media. Um, so these uh, these PACs basically try and try and endorse these candidates, but very indirectly. Uh, so yeah, they're basically like these supercharged interest groups.
Alright, there you go. Um, we'll take one last question from the chat. This is actually one that uh I I kinda like, I enjoy answering this one is, uh, explain the change in uh Democratic and Republican politics during the many um political parties, or the change in the political parties. So, um, you have to remember that the US was not founded with the Democratic and Republican Party. They kinda developed later on, um, and there's nothing that necessarily says that we need two political parties. It's just with how the electoral college system is set up, it just makes sense for there to be two larger political parties or else it'd be almost impossible to get um, a candidate elected. So, uh, with that being said, uh, the Democratic Party was founded first. It started as the Democratic Republican Party. Um, and the best way to think about their politics is the Democratic Republican, or we'll just call it the Democrats just to make life easier for everybody. Uh, but the Democratic Party uh actually started uh with the position that Republican Party is in now. Whereas the Republican Party started in the position that the Democratic Party is in now, in that Democratic Party was more conservative. Uh, it appealed more to, um, sorry, Three, go ahead. Did, oh, shoot, my audio cut out, didn't it? Um, hold on. Ah, this is a problem. Okay, there we go. Sorry, my audio cut out.
That's basically it.
Um, he's back.
Yes, I think I'm back. There we go. Sorry, I have no idea what happened with my audio there. Um, yeah, uh, yeah, as mentioned, basically the kinda, just the easiest way to think about it is how the political parties are ideologically now. They were reversed when they were founded. Um, and they changed because the Republican Party appealed more to um, the uh, to to the wealthy. Uh, whereas the Democrats started up um, the appealing more to uh the working class. And so gradually they kinda just shifted and ideologically became where they are now. Um, so that's the short and sweet of it. What we will do now, uh, is if you.
Yeah, we're less than twenty minutes, so.
Right, so what we will do now, uh, if you would like to ask a question, go ahead, use the raise hand feature. We'll bring a couple of you guys up and you can ask a question to us uh directly, get a little audience participation going here. So if you'd like to ask a question, go ahead and raise your hand using the uh raise hand feature.
I was just thinking, since there are four of us, it'd be like the voice. They just get to choose one coach.
Exactly. Oh, oh, no, college board, oh, no.
It's probably, it's, yeah, student.
Uh, I know, I know.
Testing integrity.
Uh, what's your question, Office of Testing Integrity?
Um, if we were to put this on the AP test this season, um, I'm forgetting, what is the populist party?
Okay, so the main thing is that the populist, uh, it's not a technically official term for a party. Uh, the populist started with Andrew Jackson, uh, because he was the first president to be elected into office, uh, who didn't come from money. Uh, so you had Washington, you had Adams, you had Thomas Jefferson. There there were these guys who had like plantations and stuff by the time like they, they came into power. Uh, they were most notably at the Constitutional Convention, um, uh, they wrote some of the founding documents. You know, you had Jefferson writing Declaration of Independence, you had the Monroe Doctrine, you had James Madison writing parts of the Constitution and stuff. Um, but, you know, Andrew Jackson, he was a commoner. And, you know, back then, you know, the common was not really well represented. Uh, it wouldn't be until the election of John Quincy Adams that that would happen, where he was the rival candidate. Um, but he lost because even though he won the popular vote because he was a populist, um, uh, the electoral vote stated that Quincy Adams won the election. He ran again and eventually won. Uh, the reason he was popular among the common folk was because, one, in the War of eighteen twelve, when he battled in New Orleans, um, he was known as Old Hickory. That name was given to him, you know, because of his strong stature and and whatnot. Uh, but it was also because like people respected him as a commoner. Uh, they they respected him because, you know, like he he represented such, you know, a a large group of people that were underrepresented. Uh, so that's what the populist movement was. And Andrew Jackson became uh the first modern Democrat, which definitely uh represented that group of people at the time.
Oh, I see. Thank you. I was just checking. I'm from the college board, so like, yeah, I was just making sure you guys.
Yeah, yeah. You know?
We 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 passed the test.
Yep, 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 definitely fine.
Alrighty, go to the next question here. Uh, again, we'll try to limit one question per person, just so we can try to get to as many people as possible, so. Uh, yes, welcome. What is your question?
I wanna ask, um, what are the different presidents that we need to know for the AP Gov test?
Different presidents that you need to know? I would say the name recognizable ones, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like Washington, FDR, Lincoln, Jefferson, JFK, like, if you know who they are just based off of their last name, you're good. But like someone like Martin Van Buren or um.
Millard Fillmore.
Millard Fillmore.
Presidents that you kinda skip over because not, either not much that happened um during their term or there wasn't really a controversial case during their time, so you know?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
No problem. Next question, let's see, come on up here. Hello, what is your question? Hello, anybody there? Uh, I can't hear you for whatever reason. Hello?
That's a good question, the same.
Well, well, um, hello? No? Okay, guess we'll come back to you.
Yo, can we get the Champa Rice Demon on the stage?
Yes, hello, welcome. What is your question? Can't hear you. This is.
It's a sign that the Champa Rice must enter the stage.
Before you come up here.
Yeah. We'll come back to you.
Make sure your mics are working, though, for real. Yeah.
Yeah, um, okay, let's see, alright. Mr. Champa Rice Demon, or Mrs. Champa Rice Demon. Hello, welcome. What is your question?
So my question for you is.
So my question for you is more specifically rounded towards all AP tests.
Okay.
So I currently have multiple AP tests that I have in May and I'm asking you all, do you all have any specific study methods that you like use or is there anywhere that you all studied so that your kid studies like for each class? Thoroughly enough so that you get a five on every single one?
So that's a great question. Um, I'm getting preference, just saying that there's not like an exact study method that works like for everybody, like everybody has their own ways that works best. So, you know, I'm not going to say like, oh, my method is the best because it works for me, so it works for everyone. No, that's not how it works. Everybody does differently. Everybody works best with different things. Um, what I will say though is, I mean, you know how you do, you know what your strengths are, you know what your weaknesses are. So for the courses that like, you're doing well in, you understand the content, you know how well you're doing. I wouldn't, uh, worry too much about studying heavily for those. You can go based off the knowledge that you know, you can kind of circle back on it in the day or two leading up to the exam. Whereas, um, courses that you're not so knowledgeable on the content, where you're having a little difficulty, um, remembering information, um, or you're just struggling with that, definitely spend more time reviewing that material. Do a lot of practice problems, make sure that you're used to the style of questions that you're going to be asked, that you're used to the wording, used to the type of information that's being asked of you. Um, and then, yeah, what I would do is again, kind of use your time wisely, you know, you know, you know how much time you're going to have to study for the particular exam. Uh, you know roughly how much time it takes for you to remember information normally. So I would say, you know, based off that to dedicate your, your time accordingly. Again, spend more time on the content that you're not as familiar with, that you don't feel as comfortable on. Um, and, you know, spend a little less time on the stuff that you do feel comfortable with, just so that you can kind of balance it out. And then again, you know, uh, the day or two before a particular exam, focus on just that exam's content so that you're, um, most fresh with that. Um, and then, you know, kind of just go down the line as you go from exam to exam. Um, not sure if Harry threw your styles, if you guys have anything to add to that?
Yeah, um, this is like my philosophy. At this point, you shouldn't be reading your textbook at all. At this point, if you are struggling with any content, don't go into detail. Don't like bother taking notes for specific details. You want to focus on applying what you learned throughout the year because everything you learned should have been taught by your teacher already. And you have a bad teacher. I'm sorry, I have to face that, but the truth is, it's getting the main concepts down. Applying that by practicing MCQs. There's plenty of free practice exams online. And then I know A push dedicates a bunch of like time to like, you know, doing MCQ and FRQ practices. And you can always search up any past FRQs online. That's, and I think something I, you want to emphasize is the, the week of the exam should not be you cramming and putting everything into studying, staying up to three, because you're going to be exhausted. You're going to fall asleep. You want to, this, this is my advice. You do light studying and you spend time with your family. You do whatever to relax yourself. That's the most important part because everything you learn is already embedded into your brain. Because the week exam, if you try to overpush yourself, then you're just going to forget everything. So my advice, light studying the last week of the exam. Um, the day of the exam or the day before exam, don't even study at all. That's, that's my, that's my like advice there. If you want to retain your content. Um, and just pass the exam and get a five.
Yeah, and if you don't see that, like, sorry, not to interrupt, but, um, if you don't see that, like, uh, if, if you're not thinking, you know, like maybe, maybe it might work. Uh, Heimler actually posted a recent video about a kid who actually was one of the six people to actually take the A push exam. Um, and get a perfect score, not just a five, but a perfect score. And the kind of studying habits that he, um, that he did throughout the year, uh, it was, it was just light studying, like Harry said, he literally would only study for like 30 minutes a day. And it wasn't that much. He would do his homework, he would take notes. Uh, he may have watched like maybe two Heimler videos and then just read from textbook day to day. Um, and then he was absolutely sure that he was ready to take like certain parts of the exam. So he did that a month in advance or something like that. And, you know, he wasn't getting perfect scores on all these assignments, um, but, uh, like in terms of like practicing the test. Um, so he wasn't getting like, you know, all like all five across the board, like whenever taking mock exams, because he, he took every one of them, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure. Um, but when it came down to taking the final, um, AP exam, you know, the real deal, um, it was a combination of not just taking practice exams, but it was also, you know, studying over a long period of time. Not just cramming in information in the week before, uh, because trust me, it does not work. Um, Harry is right, like, you know, cramming information, you do not retain the information. You're more likely to be stressed. You're not going to get enough sleep. I recommend for those who are, you know, whether you're ready or not for this exam, the day before the exam should not be a time to study or anything like that. That should be the day where you catch up on sleep. Uh, you, you know, you pack snacks for the AP exam, uh, you make sure you have water and whatnot. Um, and then you, you go to bed really early because, you know, the, the AP Gov exam, for example, is at 8:00 AM. Um, like, you know, like, like for everybody. So it's, you know, um, definitely make sure that you, you are well acquainted with your AP exam times and then also make sure that you are not cramming, uh, for anything at this point. Because like you said, yeah, you shouldn't be reviewing any course material at this point. Should be either you're finishing up practicing, uh, methods for these exams, or you should be, you know, making sure that you are well equipped for this exam, uh, not including content.
Yep, there you go. And then I'll just circle back again. Uh, there's no study method that will 100% work for everyone. Again, do whatever works best for you. Um, don't feel like you have to do something just because a bunch of people say that you should do it. It's all, um, all whatever, you know, you works best. You know yourself best, so just do, um, whatever works best for you.
Thank you, man. Uh, well, you have a nice day.
Yeah, me as well. Thanks for coming up. Alright, we'll take one more, uh, from the audience here. See, hello, do we have your mic working? Hello? Going once, going twice. I'm going to go with a no on the mic. Oh, I'm so sorry. Uh, let's see.
Skill issue.
Okay, hello, uh, what is your question?
Hello, um, I'm, I have a question about, uh, the LEQ on the exam. Do you have any tips for like time management, like, like, just like not like running out of time?
Just do a bunch of practice ones. That's unfortunately that.
You run out of time, bro?
Yeah, I run, I, I mean, I've done it. I run out of time. Um,
You're writing too much. What the?
Well, no.
Yeah, I guess with the, the thing is with the LEQ, so you're trying to make it look like a DBQ but without documents. That's not the goal of this essay. This essay basically reflects on what have you learned, you know, solely based on what you can remember about the course. I remember when I was writing the LAQ, uh, the LEQ, um, you know, what should I write if I'm only given, you know, just a single prompt? Because that's all you're given. Uh, and the answer to that question is, you know, they give you either a time period, um, you know, certain people or certain events. And immediately I'm able to think, oh, like I know these events happened parallel to the other ones and I'm able to relate to certain things. So it's, it's coming up with your own evidence, in other words. So I, I would say it's harder than the DBQ. Um, for me personally, um, just, just because the DBQ gives you evidence on its own. So you're automatically given the evidence point pretty much. They, they basically just hand it to you saying, alright, here are the documents, that's what you have to do. Um, as long as you come up with great commentary and your thesis is great, you're guaranteed at least like a four or five or something like that. With the LEQ, it's a little bit different. You're not writing a full-on essay. It's sort of like how the argument essay in AP Gov is not really, you're writing just a couple paragraphs. It's not a full-on essay where you're analyzing documents or whatnot. LEQ is an argument essay basically saying that a certain claim is valid or that a certain position in argument is. Um, and it's pretty much just basically saying that y- you should be able to prove that you have learned something through the course and that you are able to reflect on certain aspects of history, uh, that relate to other parts of history in the course. So if it's A push, you know, if they give you a prompt about, you know, like how did the Great Depression affect, you know, um, uh, uh, the job sectors or something like that, you know, during the period of, I don't know, 1929 to 1945 or something like that. You know, immediately I can think of, you know, we just talked about FDR's policies and that kind of thing. So it's like, if you aren't able to at least think of at least like, you know, four or five things that you could use as possible examples, um, I suggest mainly, um, probably like, yeah, practicing the LEQ because that's like the most you can do at this point. Because otherwise, you know, there's no point in reviewing content at this point, late, this late in the game.
And here's my tip. So for the LEQs, I graded a bunch and I've seen a lot. And this, this is some of the few biggest mistakes. The biggest mistake is that you guys write so much for the context. The context just needs to be at minimum two or three sentences. And you just need to name like what, one or pieces, one or two pieces of evidence and boom, your context is done. Another thing is that if you're running out of time, remember you have your DBQ and LEQ and I assume it's because either that maybe on the exam that you don't have enough time because you spent so much time on your DBQ. You're not trying to write a perfect essay. You're trying to meet the requirements of a rubric. So you can get a perfect, or not perfect, sorry, let me rephrase this. You can get a five or a six in the LEQ by writing two paragraphs. The only thing you do is write a thesis, write a context, boom, first body paragraph, second body paragraph. You explain your reason, you use two pieces of evidence minimum. And you've explained that, you support it thoroughly and you answer whatever COT, um, continuity change every time or cause effect, whatever. Boom, you get your five or six. That's not ideal, but you guys aren't trying to write a perfect essay. You guys don't have to fix your grammar issues. You guys don't have to write a lot. I know you all guys stress over it because like, oh, what if, you know, I misremembered something or whatever, whatever. You, you can have the most terrible argument and you can still get a five or six. You just have to meet the rubric, guys. Don't stress over it. Two paragraphs minimum. I have gone five or six in AP or LEQ by just writing two paragraphs. It's a time crunch thing. You don't need to.
But, because the thing is they, you don't have to write a conclusion. That's the main thing. They, for all these essays, for if it's the argument essay or whatnot, or if it's a DBQ or LEQ, you don't have to restate your thesis at the end or write a conclusion basically saying, oh, well, this has a hole. No, you don't have to do that because they're, they, they literally skip that part. All they care about is pretty much have you hit all the points in the rubric. And have you done so successfully incorporating your knowledge of, of, of whatever, if it's history or if it's government? Um, and, and that's pretty much it.
I will say, uh, as, as I will just circle back is, you know, uh, if you're struggling with the timing, just do practice. You know, the more you practice, the better you get at it. Uh, make sure that you do it with a timer. Make sure that, you know, you're getting that time crunch so that you kind of know how far you get usually. Um, if you know, you don't get quite as far as you would like to get done, you know, just do another one and make sure that you, you fall through the time. Uh, that's what I did. I did about, I think, two or three LEQs before the actual exam, just that like I actually kind of knew what I was doing, kind of knew with the pacing, knew what my thought process was going. So that would, I think, uh, be the best to just do a little practice before, just so that you know, um, what you need to do and kind of what to expect when it comes to the LEQ so that when you do do it, you're not totally lost trying to figure out what you need to do.
Okay, thank you, guys. This is pretty helpful.
Yeah, no problem then.
No problem. Um, so we are out of time, unfortunately. I know there's still a lot of questions left to answer, but not to worry. There is one more study session coming up next week. Uh, check out the, uh, study session announcement channel. That's going to have all our study sessions listed there in your local time zone. So no need to do any conversions for that. Also check out the events channel. As not only, uh, are our study sessions listed there, but we also have, uh, some different events for the different courses. I know Stiles is doing some AP Gov stuff. Uh, we got some stuff going for AP Euro and, um, AP World as well. So, you know, again, lots of stuff to, uh, look forward to. Again, make sure you check out, uh, the events calendar and the study sessions channel. That's going to have all the events. Everything's going to be listed in your local time zone. No need to do any conversions. Come to as many or as few as you'd like. And we'll help you guys try to get fives on your exam. As again, uh, as I mentioned earlier, these sessions are being recorded. A link will be provided in the study sessions channel within the next couple of days. You can also check out the YouTube channel, uh, it's just Timeless History Discord. Go ahead, check out our other, uh, study sessions there. You can, uh, look back, see if there's anything that you missed. Um, with that, that's about it. Thanks everybody for coming out. We'll see you again next week. Have a good one.